I'd like to call the special meeting of the Northside Two-Times-Boarded Commissioners for Thursday, May 11, 2017, at 7:01 PM. We'll call Mayor and Attorney.
Commissioner Harold, Commissioner Higginson.
Here.
Commissioner Bertini.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner DeSenda.
Commissioner Cessara.
Here.
And Commissioner Martino.
Here. Everybody please rise and declare their allegiance. I would like to declare that we are the United States of America and that we are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do they see that this would like to speak tonight, Mr. Pope, to the podium? Records show no citizen in question. Work session discussed on it, Mr. Attorney.
No, we don't. For public discussion tonight, we do have a few items under the playing order for discussion.
Good evening, gentlemen. There are four items to present to you tonight. The first one is subdivision seven of 2017 of Paul Carver, subdivision plan number two. This is a property that has frontage on First Street and a lot's up against being hinded property that has frontage on Piper Lane. And in essence, they're just trying to redefine the boundary line between those two lots. It's a swap. Each property gets a little bit, each property gives a little bit up. I don't think the ultimate size really is changing of the two, but it's just trying to accommodate a swimming pool on one and give a little more isolation distance. So the planning commission recommends approval of that. Next item is Weaver Estates, and this is about a 24-acre piece of ground that sits between Stratago's banquet center and Horizontal Wireline Services. It has frontage on Colonial Manor Road and touches a little estates at the bottom end. I think it should be called the Nectide Plan when you look at the shape of it, but I've not been able to convince RWS that that makes a good name. You said you needed a street name?
Yes.
Cravat Court.
What is it?
French for Nectide, Cravat Court.
You have a third name, but not that.
I like it. But what's proposed is a simple cul-de-sac street. It's 971 feet in length, I believe, so it exceeds the 700-foot length that is spelled out on the SADO. But there's really no other way to develop the property. You bring one street in and there's not enough room to do a loop and come back out. There are 21 lots proposed, two lots for stormwater management, one here, a Colonial Manor Road, one in the back. The property has a peak in the middle, so the front half drains to Colonial Manor Road, the back half drains to the rear, maybe more like 75%, 25%. The developer needs to go before the zoning board to get variances for lot setbacks for five lots right there. There are some waivers that have been requested in terms of vertical curve distance. The length of the cul-de-sac street and for sanitite HP plastic pipe rather than reinforced concrete pipe under the roads. It has the same strength, has reinforced concrete pipe, but it comes in a piece of pipe that's 20 feet long. So we can get from one side of the road to the other side of the road, and the joints and alignment issues, it really, I think, is going to change the way we do storm sources. So the planning commission recommends approval of that. We've already gone to sewage planning, an HOP is required for the entrance road from Colonial Manor Road, and they need to get erosion control and stormwater approval from West Palm County and DEP because this is a high-quality watershed that goes down to Long Island. So with the conditions set forth in my memo, and there's three waivers and approval from the zoning board, which will not come until next month, the planning commission recommends approval of the Weaver Plan. Questions on that?
Yeah, I got a couple questions. You were saying, there's been those site distance studies or anything done? Because that's an at...
It's in a dip.
In a dip there, and it's...
I have not seen what's been submitted, but I understand there was 600 feet plus, 600 feet is considered adequate.
Okay, well, I'm not sure where the entrances are.
I know, Bob will give you more information on that.
Okay, and the other question I would have as far as the cul-de-sac, is there a room in there for a bus to carry? We're running this, all our housing plans, it's one way in, one way out, and I just can't feasibly see a bus stop in there until we enter it.
There should be plenty of room there. We didn't reduce the size of it or anything else.
Nothing else?
Yeah, it's full size. We did not reduce that at all.
I thought I did.
We ordered so it wouldn't have to pass through any of the barriers on that. And as far as the site distance, we're actually 300 feet on both sides, part of the 200 feet. That's what we said.
I had a question on the vertical curve waiver. The 5% vertical change at the intersection of Colonial Manor Road and Wilton Drive. Can you explain that a little better, what that means?
In essence, when you come in from Colonial Manor Road, you're starting on the hill. The subdivision of land development ordinance requires that there be a flat landing pad at any intersection. In essence, if it's icy and you're sliding, you're not going to slide out on the ground, or at least you'll be on a flat road by the time you get in there. In order to do that, a flat landing pad, you would have to come in there, graded back 25% of feet, and then start on the hill. The name of the question, the waiver, I didn't mention it. I'm not saying it's good, I'm not saying it's bad, it's certainly not the only place in the township where that exists. Perfect example, Rich, is Windsor in Willow Estates. If you remember the movie Bullitt, the green Mustang flying up and down the hills, and every time it came to the intersection, it went airborne. That is what we would have on Windsor if we required that flat area at each intersection. Generally, we have allowed the side streets to be paved with the main street. You'll hide on one side of the road, on the other side you can meet gray as you commit. That's in essence what's been done here.
And how much of the gray will it be?
I'm not sure I can tell you that off the top of my head. I'm not going to be able to add that information to any of my hands. I can find it out for you, if that's clear.
I would just like some kind of comparison on the vertical curves. Because I think we have some in the township that are too steep. Maybe not right at the intersection, but I think we have some other ones.
I guess I can ask the most, that the township lost 12% of the land and the variance, we're probably closer to 10% coming off that street, which is fine. There's a lot of students in Northern County Township lost, that's why they're 10% or above. I put them in over at several times, many of those was one, 13%, and that vertical curve grows quickly, not for any complaints about that. The problem with putting that down would take the top of that hill at a much higher, or much lower level, and we would not be able to move this over to make it work. So basically, we're going to take two or three feet of field from the top, but we don't have to cut. And that's one of the reasons for, as far as the road over the Lincoln Hills and all the other towns. Now that Lincoln Hills coming out the back entrance, that's another one, the roads are in about 13%. And I'm sure you guys determine on it, it's not a big problem to do this. Basically, all it is, if we had to go up to the top, those lots I'd be asking for, the first five lots were asking for a 21-foot setback rather than a 30, because there's such a hill in behind it, there would be no one left. Without that curve, any term around 100, who knows what's going on with these pretty streets. I don't think it's a problem, but without that, I don't know if we could develop those lots.
I would say with the vertical curve, I think our standards are very good, and I think a lot of thought went into designing those. But the one thing I will say, this is a 21-lot subdivision for the Den End Street, there certainly won't be any through traffic. The people who live there are familiar with the layout of the road, and Bob has graciously agreed to give us sidewalks. So we won't have people walking in the street, and suddenly you come over the crest of the hill, and they get nailed because they're walking their dog. They'll be on the sidewalk, safe and secure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions, while we're...
Okay, the next item is the Stratton Plan. Stratton, I'm sorry, I gotta, did I pass over this? All right, good. The Stratton Plan is two homes on a single lot on Guffy Wilton Road. I don't know how that ever happened, but it's been that way for years. And I guess somebody's realized, you know, we're never going to be ourselves two homes on one lot, so they want to subdivide the lot, put each home on its own lot, and both of the lots meet the essential requirements, so certainly no reason not to do it. And the planning commission recommends approval of that. There you go. There's the footprints in the homes, as they said. Last one is the Site Plan Two of 2017, the Verizon or Vav communication cell tower. And we've discussed that before, just by way of review. That is proposed to be on the southwest corner of the 67-acre Curver Farm property. It is approximately 200 feet to 220-some feet, depending on which way you go to the property line. There's a little poster location to show you where the proposed tower would sit relative to Dartmore Estates to the west and Curver Farm Estates to the south. You can see the Curver's area going with fronts on Guffy Road. I think everybody would be familiar with that location. This is based on a propagation study that was done by Verizon that shows weak spots in the coverage area, the white areas there, the white polygons, are areas where there is minimal or no coverage. And in accordance with the subdivision and the land development ordinance and the south, I'm sorry, the zoning ordinance, they are proposing a tower, the 195 feet in height with a four-foot lightning rod. There are provisions to be made so that three additional cell phone providers could locate antennas on that tower with the equipment bases at the bottom. Chain link fence with landscaping to screen that is proposed around the bottom. There's already a gravel road to get to the site. And it would take those white areas and turn them either blue, which means there's outdoor coverage, or green, which means there's full coverage inside the building. And I don't know if you have any questions about that, representatives from Vav, the tower, and Verizon here.
Before any comments are made, I want to state for the record that I'm an employee of Verizon Communications, and therefore, this is a clear conflict for me. I must refrain from any discussion or vote on the matter, so I'm just going to step down. Thank you.
I would just, Andy, I thank you for the background again, it's been a while since we've looked at this. If the board recalls, we had the site plan application submitted a few months ago, and then we had forwarded a legal opinion from our solicitor to the developer, letting them, you know, submit a conditional use application from a zoning perspective, and to date, we have not received that application. So I would ask Bruce Dice, our solicitor, to give the board some legal advice on where we stand concerning this matter. We do have to make a decision by next Wednesday on the site plan, or we would run into a situation where it could be a difficult one. But I'll ask Bruce to give you his opinion, at least as much as he can in public. And Bruce, if you feel like he can give you that, if he certainly can make that call.
I understand. You know, what I understand is, as of this day, which is May 11th, we have not received an application for conditional use application. If this was a cell tower in a residential district under our zoning, under our ordinances, they would be required to commit with a conditional use application. I'm telling you that because next week, you have to, as John said, make a decision on this matter. One of the grounds for turning the project down, if that's what you choose to do, is the applicant has not submitted a conditional use application. While there might be a difference of opinion between the applicant and the township, that's our opinion. And so you're going to have to take action next week. I think the time runs out for deemed approval for the application.
I think it's the following day. Actual meeting.
So if you don't take any action next week, and do nothing, then the project will be deemed approved. And that means that you've lost control over dealing with the project, unnecessary loss of control, you've said to the applicant, proceed, in some of the words.
Bruce, what's your recommendation then, if we don't receive that application for conditional use by then?
I would prepare a resolution that indicates that you can deny the application for the site plan because there's better to submit the conditional use application.
Questions from the board on his legal opinion, or if you want to have further discussion concerning the application?
Just note, my thinking, if the applicant comes in with a conditional use application, then I'm going to indicate to you that you're going to have to proceed with that as well. And I will tell you that under conditional use law, if the applicant fills all the conditions under your conditional use section, all the criteria, they get that approval as a matter of right. Because conditional use is a use of right, provided the applicant submits and satisfies the criteria under the conditional use portion of the ordinance.
If we get that application in before next Wednesday, we'll certainly make you aware that if it is received, that we can address it at the meeting next Wednesday. Andy, that's everything, my dear.
That's all, folks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Next item is further board comment.
Yeah, I have something. I'd like to add an item to the agenda, that being the discussion of the Millings investigation that was conducted over a year ago now, that the township paid for with tax dollars.
Make a motion.
Yes, started out with the one make a motion, I think.
Second. Discussion. All big jive?
I think you're just adding it to the agenda.
That you're adding it to the agenda, that's it. Do we have any public comment on this?
The adding of the matter.
You're adding the Millings investigation to the agenda. All of the papers, jive?
Aye.
Vote? I have five.
That was unexpected. I think at this point, I would like to make a motion now, that we release that Millings investigation report that was conducted by the private agency that the township hired a year ago, and then turned over to the county DA, the state police, and the attorney general, whom basically, we've heard nothing back from. I think it was paid for with public dollars. That's the number one question that I get asked when I go out. I attended bar for a charity function a couple of weeks ago. That was the number one question when I walked behind the bar. Whatever happened to the Millings? It was phrased a little bit differently. It was phrased like, did it get away with stealing the Millings? And I said, we're waiting to hear back from the attorney general. I think the public deserves at least some knowledge at this point, and I make a motion, like I said, to release the report, subject to the proper redactions by Solicitor Dice, and that that happen can be released by the end of business tomorrow.
Second. Discussion. Why can't we wait to get attorney general?
How long do we wait? It's been 14 months? 13 months?
As the board decides to take, if someone needs to call the attorney general.
People are impatient. We already did that, I think, once. We've contacted a number of people. I think the state police finally sent us a letter that said it didn't fall within their purview, or something like that. The DA, in my opinion, passed the buck and passed it on to the attorney general, and then we did it independently, I believe. So I'm tired of waiting, and I think a lot of people are tired of waiting. They want to hear something.
Absolutely, yes. It's election time, so let's do it.
I wanted to do it long before now, but we didn't have a board makeup like this. There's three of us that wanted to release it a year ago, and only two of you did a poster. So I think we can do it tonight. We tried to do it a year ago, and you wouldn't let us, and you wouldn't let us.
That's right.
And I got a motion.
Where you think my vote is going to be tonight?
We'll see where it goes.
Of course you did so.
Of course!
The only question I haven't had, and it's fair if everyone had their opinion, but if you had an issue with the report that was released to us, you didn't state it back at that time, did you, unless...
Oh, I most certainly did.
That's why we decided to go out and ask the OEO to do another investigation.
What was the whole report?
It was garbage.
What was garbage about the report?
The way it was written, it left a lot of questions up there, of who they were talking about. I want to make, you weren't at least not proud of that. If you had a little bit of an issue, tell me that. I told you back then, that I've had to conduct investigations in the military. If I would have handed the report in like that, I would have had my ass handed to me, with the garbage in there. Everybody take that forward, sort.
Go ahead.
Good. Now, on top of it, you know, we turned around and paid for that report. The garbage that was in there, we paid for it. I wanted to pay them, but we did. So yeah, just give it to the public and see what they have to say about the public junk that was in there.
That's right.
I don't have a problem with that. But I want everybody to understand where I stand on this, that report was garbage.
Actually, what? Is it fair to read?
But the concrete ditches over in there, and they couldn't even get one first rate from one paragraph to the next paragraph, who they were talking about?
There you go. All of the big jive?
Aye.
The vote?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bertini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Cessara?
Yes.
And Commissioner Martino?
No.
And that will be by the close of business by tomorrow, and that will be available under the public rate, you know, law. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe you have said all of that, and that's correct.
And anybody that wants it can ask for it tomorrow.
Any other further board comment? If not, I need one more motion.
Motion to return, second.
Second.
You can't do that.
Discussion. All of you, the papers out?
Aye.
Vote. Meeting's adjourned at seven, only P. P. M. There will be an executive session afterward, on time for the...